Good morning, everyone. We'll call the meeting of the Board of Trustees to order. And if everyone could please rise for the invocation led by Mr. Stonecifer and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
We're all here for one single purpose. That's to serve the students at this school, at this college. We thank you so much for the opportunity to change lives. We know there are frustrations like there are with every job, but we ask that you give us the strength and the comfort to know that this is something worthwhile, that these are frustrations, these are stresses, these are problems worth fighting through and working through. We thank you for the students that go to this school. We thank you for what St. Petersburg College means for this community. I ask that you would help us each and every day, serve others first and foremost, and love those around us, even those that are difficult to love. Thank you so much for allowing us to do this. Guide us and give us leadership as we move forward in the next month, and it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to our comments section, I first want to congratulate the entire college community on U.S. News &amp; World Report, so that's wonderful. (APPLAUSE). I'm sure you saw the news in The Times, on social media, but St. Pete College ranked number 17 as a top public school in the southern region, and number 45 as a top performer on social mobility. And Dr. Williams and I were talking about that ranking specifically, and while it's not as high as we would love to see it, you know, social mobility and economic mobility was just a very specific strategy and goal that was only established two years ago. And so, first of all, I'm proud of St. Pete College for having the foresight of embracing that and understanding our role as a community college and making sure that we're serving the community to move people out of poverty, but then to be recognized for it in U.S. News &amp; World Report is wonderful. So, congratulations to each and every one of you on that. Another, just a couple of things. We had a wonderful opening of the Collegiate High School in Tarpon Springs earlier this month, so that, it was a great gathering of people, and congratulations to each of you. The students weren't there that day, but we got to see the classrooms and meet several of the teachers, and we had elected officials there, and I know that the entire community of Tarpon Springs is thrilled to have that, so thank you for all of your hard work for that. And then, at the Seminole campus, we had the opening of our Community Partnership Center and the Business Center with the Chamber of Commerce, which is just another example of good partnerships that happen there. So, thanks to each of you for making that happen, and I'll let everybody else speak first, and then I'll come back to me. So, anybody else have something to say?
I will just echo Chair Cole with how fun it was and exciting to see the amount of people. At the ribbon-cutting and grand opening of our St. Petersburg Collegiate High School in Tarpon Springs, fantastic facility. I wanted to thank the faculty and the staff there for being so open and welcoming to us, giving tours, showing us what they do, walking us through the process. It was a special day. And also our representatives and legislators that were there, great showing. We're thankful for their support and everything, and we're excited about what this means for the college going forward. So, that was, it was a good day. Also, I had the opportunity to attend a Chamber of Commerce trip for the city of St. Petersburg in St. Paul, Minnesota, and Minneapolis, Minnesota last week. That's a trip that I do almost every year as a representative of this college and as a business owner in the community, and I can't tell you the amount of positive comments I received from the 55 leaders that were on that trip.
Wow.
Both county commissioners, city leaders, chamber leaders, business owners, 501(c)(3) operators, you name it. All they had were great things to say about St. Pete College. There were many people excited about how they can partner with us in the future. Great comments made about St. Pete Collegiate High School and what that means for us as well, and what that means for this county and this community. So, again, I say it every year, I'm proud to be a part of what is happening here. It's neat to get away with a group like that of leaders in our community who, most of them know what we're doing, how we're doing it, and how hard we're working. So, that's a testament to you all. Thank you very much for that. And finally, I want to thank the foundation. I went to the Patrick Brett Foundation fundraiser gala a couple of weekends ago. We've been before, Dr. Williams has been before, a great part of our, a great group in our community that works in partnership with the foundation to give scholarships to students at St. Petersburg College. It was a great evening, great event. Thank you for the foundation's support and the members that were there, Jesse included. And I want to thank Steve Shepard for being here today, too. One of our foundation board members, and Mike Carroll. Thank you for your continued support. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I can echo the Tarpon Springs grand opening. It was impressive, the amount of community support that we had there, and I'm excited about the candidates that we have for the ISPS position that we are hiring for, working with them, Mr. Strickland on that. Finally got through the 30-something resumes that we got for that, and there's some amazing candidates, so.
Great. Excellent.
The Tarpon Springs grand opening was also my first kind of official event that I attended, and it was very impressive. I enjoyed being a part of it, and I echo the sentiments of everyone so far.
Great. Mr. Gibbons?
Good morning.
Good morning. Wonderful, okay. Well, before we move on from these comments, we would be remiss if we did not recognize Mr. Stonecifer for the work that he did as the chair.
Right, and I still coffee everywhere. Perfect.
I'm glad you recognized him for his mustache.
Well, that's how people don't recognize me.
So, we have, do you want me to stand up over here?
We'll do this officially.
We'll do this officially. Can I have everybody else join us, too? Oh, you really do make them.
Yeah.
So, I obviously came on to the Board of Trustees right when Mr. Stonecifer was elected the chairperson, and I couldn't have had a better introduction to the organization, to how these meetings should run, to the communication between the Board of Trustees and the administration. And your thoughtful and considerate leadership at every turn was appreciated, such an example, and I only hope each of us can live up to that when we each take our roles, so.
Thank you so much.
This is presented to Nathan Stonecifer for exemplary service as chairman of the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees from August 2017 to August 2019, so.
Thank you all very much. Everybody.
Did you get everybody?
Yeah, we did.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Okay. Let me get scratched.
Somebody left their glasses on there.
Me.
Oh. We're a mess today.
We're a mess. We're all getting organized. Okay, now we're moving on to Dr. Williams' comments.
Yay, my turn. This is great. I just want to thank the college family for everything you guys have done in the month of September. It's been totally amazing, so I'm going to try my best to not leave anything, anyone out. First, I want to congratulate Laura Sharp. She was honored by the Girls Inc. as the 2019 STEM Woman of the Year. She's one of our faculty members. She does a great job. Very good. Also, Dr. Katie Schultz recently wrote a blog that was picked up by CASE, which is a national organization, Center for Advancement and Support of Education, and I'm very proud of her blog called "Lessons Learned by a 15-Year Grant-Writing Professional." So, congratulations, Dr. Katie Schultz. Our, under Dr. Smiley and some of our other college family, on September 17th, we were the selected hosts for the naturalization ceremony where folks became American citizens here at the Clearwater Campus, I believe, and so I want to thank Dr. Smiley and his team for having that event at the Clearwater Campus. Good job. Yesterday, we were provided notification by the U.S. Department of Justice that we were awarded a $550,000 grant for preventing violence against law enforcement officers. This grant is going to enhance our existing in harms way law enforcement suicide prevention program. So, congratulations to that team for making that happen. We also, in September, opened a new learning center at the Downtown Campus, and it is beautiful. We now have one center, like the other campuses, where students can go and get tutored and get assistance, all in one area. Excellent job Downtown Campus. 9/11, we had a lot of celebrations. One is that of 60 of our staff, 30 were our Leadership SPC team members, who got together to sort and bag food for the needy, especially for our veterans, and I saw all the pictures on Facebook. Great job on that. And also at the Allstate Center, we honored 13,000 vets by planting a flag in memory of each one of those vets at the Allstate Campus. If you have not seen the pictures, it is very, very humbling, and I nearly cried off of them. It was very good. We partnered with the Camaraderie Foundation and did a great job there. A week ago, I had the opportunity of joining Speaker-designate Chris Sprouse on his inauguration, and also, Eard and I got a chance to go to sort of like a gathering the night before, which was amazing. But more than that, we spent a full day with the Department of Education, and we spent time learning a lot more about what they're focusing on, how it's going to impact not only the Florida college system, but we received specific information for SPC. And so, roll up your sleeves and get ready. I'll be bringing that information forward so that we can get better prepared, and that's all that I have to report for right now.
Thank you. We don't have any public comment cards, but is there anyone here who wanted to address the board? Seeing none, our next on the agenda is review and approval of the minutes. Are there any changes?
So moved. Second.
Any comments or changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Ms. Gardner, any reports?
Yes, good morning, Chair Cole, trustees, Dr. Williams. On your desk, you'll find an update concerning the Adjunct Faculty Union as well as informational brochure. As you know, the petitions for unionizations were filed in late December by the labor union, SEIU, to represent adjunct faculty at several colleges in Florida. During the years, elections were held. SPC appears to be the last one for 2019. The union has won at some schools and lost at others, and in some cases with a small margin. However, the most recent election was this last Thursday at Santa Fe, where the college voted down the union. So, yesterday, started the mail-in ballot process for SPC, and the state commission mailed out the ballots to 865 voters, eligible voters that are adjunct faculty. The voting will remain open until October 22nd, which is just about a month, at which time the commission will tally the votes and announce the results. The college has been very proactive in providing information to adjunct faculty regarding unionization and what it means. Adjunct faculty have been encouraged to become informed as to the pros and cons, and most importantly, to participate in the election process. Dr. Williams, Dr. Furlong, and other college leaders, such as deans and chairs, have been actively engaging adjunct faculty, providing information, answering questions, and have voiced their confidence in the community of care here at SPC. So, during this homestretch month, additional information will continue to go out in a letter, a video, and in a reminder, postcard to vote. So, we'll certainly keep you apprised, but we'll know the outcome by the, during the week of the next board meeting. That's my report.
Thank you. Are there any questions about this, or something we've talked about in the past, but I know it's especially the?
I will voice this again. I'm not sure why anybody would want to unionize without giving the board the opportunity to work through these issues with the first. I'm adamantly opposed to this unionization thing, and they came before us. I still haven't received their questions, so, I mean, that's just where I am on it. You know, the folks have to be where they are.
Thank you, Ms. Gardner. Thank you, Mr. Gibbons. I think we all have some concerns about negotiating in the future if there's a union involved, so we appreciate that update, and hopefully we'll hear good news in October. So, moving on to our presentation, as we talked last month, Dr. Williams and I have been looking at the agenda, and so in October, we're going to see a bit different order of the agenda and some different presentations and such, but this month, we're moving on as we have and being responsive to some of the questions that have arisen in the past couple of months at the board meetings. So, our next presentation is Ms. Gomez to speak about the Quality Enhancement Plan.
Good morning, Chair Cole. Good morning, board. Good morning, Dr. Williams. My name is Sarah Gomez. I am the faculty lead for our Quality Enhancement Plan, or referred to as our QEP. I'm here to give you an update today. I want to remind the board that this is a requirement for accreditation with SACs COC. So, we have been working on this for quite a few years, and this is just an update on where we're currently at. In year five, we are required to provide a fifth-year report to SACs COC to provide them information on what our initial goals were, talk about any changes that were made to the QEP, really looking at what kind of impact we've had on the student learning and what the institution has learned from this process. So, to remind the board of what our Quality Enhancement Plan is, it is referred to as Ready, Set, Succeed, or RSS. We break this into three different parts. So, our first goal for Ready is to look at students really gaining ownership over their academic pursuits. So, we look at things like their mindset. We look at them and their motivation for being here and what they need to be involved in in order to gain those goals that they have academically, but also within their careers. Set, we really focus on building learning strategies and skills that will help them in their coursework. So, we look at things like time management, knowledge monitoring, and comprehension. And then the last piece, succeed, we look at persistence, retention, and completion. So, we really want to make sure that if these students are here to pursue a particular goal, that they are actually completing that goal. Now, the Ready, Set, Succeed is the title for overall for the Quality Enhancement Plan, but we break the plan into further categories. So, we have college-wide impacts, which I will mention kind of throughout the presentation, but I'm going to focus primarily on our Neighborhoods for Success, or N4S. The Neighborhoods for Success has a target population of students, and the students that are eligible to participate in the neighborhoods are flexible opt-out students. Just to remind the board, in 2012, the Florida Senate passed Senate Bill 1720, which allowed students who graduated in 2007, 2007, sorry, from a high school, a public high school in the state of Florida, to opt out of any developmental recommendations. They also are not required to take any type of placement testing, so we are required to use the recommendations from the high schools to try to figure out where to place them. What we found was that these students would go straight into college-level coursework, and they weren't doing real well. They weren't as successful. So, we decided to focus on this particular population. When a student refuses at least one of those developmental recommendations, they are able to participate in the Neighborhoods for Success program. We also asked that they have 15 credit hours or less, so we want to try to catch them at the beginning of their programs, at the beginning of their academic careers. But the reason for 15 credit hours or less is in case we have a student who decided to come to the institution, take those classes, maybe didn't do so great. This gives us an opportunity to try to catch them and support them with this program. They also need to be enrolled at at least six academic course credit hours. This is to help them make sure that they're successful in their academic courses, because that's the purpose of this program. And then our online section, students need to be enrolled in at least one online course. This is a two-semester program, so we are with them their entire year. It does start in the fall and goes through the spring. It is a non-credit course, so students do not have to pay tuition for this class, but they also do not receive credit for the course. As incentive for them to participate, we do provide them with a small netbook, as well as a wireless mouse and a case. The average cost is about $200 per student to provide them with these tools. They have a support network that encompasses a faculty member, a success coach, and the success coach is one of our learning support tutors, a peer mentor, and a champion advisor to really wrap them in the support that they need. In the fall, we focus on developing success strategies in those areas that I mentioned prior, and we also focus on career exploration and academic planning by having students place their coursework into their My Learning Plan for their entire degree program. We also focus on connecting them to resources at the college. In the spring, we have them take those classes, or those skills that they learned in their first semester, and apply them to their new academic coursework. We continue to do more career development, and we also integrate the SPC Reads book. I want to focus on our year one. We are currently in year two. So, one of the things that we saw with our group last fall was that we had higher success rates, and we had lower withdrawal and WF rates in comparison to students who were eligible to participate in the Neighborhoods for Success program, but did not do so. We also have focused on some of those gateway courses that students typically take within their first semester or their first year of their academic programs, one of those being Composition 1 or ENC 1101. And what we saw was that last year, overall, in the fall and spring, our students had higher success rates. They also had lower withdrawal rates, WF rates, and F rates compared to those students who were eligible to participate in the Neighborhoods for Success program but did not. We have learned quite a few lessons through the pilot and the first year. Whenever you're implementing a new program, you have to make some changes, and so we have made some course revisions, trying to cut back on a lot of extra assignments, because we don't want to load these students with a lot of extra work, because this program is to support them in their academic coursework. We have also expanded additional sections in year two, and we have eliminated any kind of assessments that were seen to be redundant. So, if an assessment was already looking at a particular area, we didn't need to have a second assessment looking at that same area. We have also continued to get guidance from the RSS Leadership Committee, which is a college-wide committee who provides input and strategies on what we may need to change and adjust with the program. For our first year, we did have 62 students participating. Out of those 62 students, 49 successfully completed and graduated from the program in May of 2019. This also allowed them to successfully complete their first year here at SPC. We do collect data from our students in the fall and the spring, trying to get feedback from them, and I just wanted to share with you one of the qualitative responses that we received from the fall. For this particular student, they really enjoyed the group discussions that they had in their NFS 1000 class. They felt like those discussions and the support they were receiving really helped them, particularly with their math class and preparing for exams. And they also felt like they weren't the only one. They weren't the only one trying to adjust, and they got this sense of belonging by being part of the program. What we're doing currently in year two, like I mentioned, we have expanded the program. So, we have a section at Tarpon, Clearwater, Seminole, Gibbs, Downtown, and online. At Tarpon, we are currently piloting learning communities to try to also help with success. We have found through cohort models that when students stay together, they tend to do better as well. And so, in the fall, currently, students will go to their ENC 1101 class, and then they go straight to their NFS 1000 course. In the spring, we will be keeping the same model, except they will take their applied ethics course and then go to their NFS 1000 course, so hopefully increase success in both of these academic courses. We have welcome events at the beginning of the semester, before the semester starts, and we had five welcome events on five different campuses to help students get to know their support networks, get to know their classmates, get to know the college. We also helped them set up those netbooks so that they would be ready and prepared for the first week of classes. We also have college-wide events. So, Off on the Right Foot was our event at the end of August. It is the second week of the semester, and this is a college-wide event open to all students, where they can come and learn strategies to help them be successful in their college academic careers. We also offer that in an online format, so we did have a webinar for students who were not able to attend the on-campus events. Our next event is Keep It Going, which is on October 17th. This event does look at enrollment, and the whole goal is for enrollment for spring. These events are required for N4S students, but these are open to all students. So, on October 17th, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., we will be having events on all five of those main campuses to increase enrollment, where students can come, meet with advisors, select their classes for the spring semester, put them into their shopping carts, and be ready for spring registration, which starts the following week. We will hold a webinar that evening for any students who cannot attend the on-campus events as well. We also continue to develop college-wide resources in the form of toolkits, professional development, and Neighborhoods for Success Titan Thursday webinars, which happen three times throughout the semester. Any questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
This is a good program. This is our second time solving this issue for the state of Florida. Dr. Furlong probably could tell you about how we had done this earlier and went to, at the time, Senate President Joe Negron, and talked to him about how we were not taking students through an entire semester, but getting them prepared for those courses in a kind of a short course, wasn't it, Dr. Furlong? And they didn't, they didn't want to hear anything about it. They just didn't want students to have, to have to take the development of course, too. They didn't want to take them. And as a result of that, for lack of, well, as a result of arrogance, and students were coming in that were not prepared from high school, which we knew was already the case because we had been helping them for so long, the legislature thought that it was good that if they went to high school for four years, they got a high school diploma, and they were prepared to take ENC 1101, and that's not the case. It's still not the case. For 62 students, I'm proud of them because they actually took advantage of this program. There are so many more that don't take advantage of this program, and we can't make it a requirement, or I would have asked this board a long time ago to do that. But we're losing good students because they don't understand that college is much different, and the expectations are very different than high school. They look at us as the 13th grade, and we're not, right? And so, we're trying to prepare them for the workforce, life, and so on, and I keep saying this, and I know you guys probably get tired of me saying it, but Eckerd College is known for having excellent writers. They're known for that, right? And we got to figure out what we're going to be known for. Are we going to produce the best product in this area, that area, whatever, or just generally the best product in Pinellas County, period? I think we do that. I think we do it without a lot of assistance, and I think we do it despite the impediment. So, this is a good program. I'm glad to see that we figured this out again, and hopefully the students will take advantage of the program and do well and move forward. Forty-nine out of 62, that's a pretty good number.
That's pretty good. Excellent. Anyone else?
I completely agree, Mr. Gibbons. What would be the ideal number of students enrolled in this program as a percentage of those that have the option?
Currently, we can only support a maximum of about 150.
Okay.
So, right now, we currently have about 85 students enrolled, so we could be able to support a few more, but based on our requirements, that's where we land.
So, if we find that it's working and we're having success, then we go back and look at it and see how we can fit more into this model?
Look at the resources.
All right.
Good job.
Good job.
Thank you. Mr. Gibbons?
I want to get back to Mr. Thon Saffir's original question. How many students do we currently take that qualify of this program but are not taking it? Total, college-wide, do you know that, or you don't?
I don't have that data with me. I could definitely provide that to you.
What was your question again? I'm sorry.
College-wide, the students that actually need this program that don't go to it.
So I think...
Is that not the 1153 number here?
I thought it was.
NFS enrollment eligibility, but did not participate.
And that's college-wide?
That was been...
All the people that are enrolled?
Yeah, that's last year. So I don't have current numbers.
So we can bring back the current numbers.
No, I don't need the current numbers. It's not going to be much yet. Yeah, I was making sure that that number was right. When he originally asked for that question, but...
But when you say 62 accepted the charge out of the...
Out of 11.
But be mindful, Dr. Williams, that's nothing that you or a board, anybody else can do. They have to accept the program. We have to try to push them to accept the program. I think the way that they set it up, where you leave a tough class and then you go to there, I mean, you're getting immediate help, is pretty smart. So I mean, I would just like to see us do it college-wide. I know that's a resource issue, number one, but number two, how can we push some... And maybe Dr. Smiley will have that when he comes up, because he's a pretty smart guy. So maybe he'll have how we can push some of these students to that program.
Well, we're putting a lot of effort. The advisors are putting in a lot of effort of educating the students as to where they would land and recommending that they even take the placement test and DAVID or Neighborhoods for Success. They have an entire methodology that they follow to educate the students, say, now, you're struggling in math, you see this, are you sure you want to jump into this? Or you're struggling in reading, are you sure you want to jump into ENC 1101? And because we cannot mandate it, it is simply up to the student, and so it's very challenging.
I mean, you're talking about a college student. They want to go to the classes they have to and leave. I get it, but like a lot of these kids are young people, or people don't understand that it's, you know, they're missing some of the stuff that they need, so...
Thank you so much.
Good job.
Appreciate it. And Dr. Smiley and Dr. Strickland.
Oh, Dr. Strickland's a smart guy, too. My bad.
Madam Chairman, Board Members, Madam President, with my colleague and Chair of the Task Force Provost Strickland, our task is briefly twofold. We come to update you on the African-American male student success task force, and we're going to do that. We also come to update you on some work that is currently taking place, so you know that we're working even now. I want to say then to this board that the task force charge was made very clear by Dr. Williams. No ifs, no ands, and nothing else. It was made very clear. Support by Dr. Connor and Dr. Furlong Stern, and without question. And so it's up to us then now to do the work. And so we say then with the charge that is clear, if you'll see, we were then charged to review and assess the climate of past and current initiatives for African-American males, to assess it. Secondly, we were to identify and review opportunities and challenges at SPC for African-American males, period. And then thirdly, we were to develop and implement recommendations, principles, strategies, and program both short-term and long-term for improving the success and retention of African-American males, and identify those who will be responsible and accountable for making it happen. So we then say then that as we move forward with our work, there were briefly three powerful undertakings with a statement made. First, so that it can be real clear that our work is data-driven. And so then we review key student data. Our research team here at the college gave us all of the data we needed, period, about everything you need to know about students and those particular students. Secondly, our key undertaking is to review current literature. We searched the literature back and forwards, front, up, and down. We've examined what is being done by the best, what is being written by the best, what has been put forward by the best. So we have the information about what we believe works and what we know have been developed by research. Thirdly, then we were to examine the inventory of all past and current programs here at the college. Look at the history of what has taken place, and then look at what's taking place now as we prepare to develop what we believe will be a powerful force in moving forward what will take place in the future. And then, of course, fourthly, we gather student input. We gather student input. We gather student input, reached out to students all over the county from St. Petersburg College, as our students are soliciting their input about what works for them, what they believe we can do to cause this to be a successful experience for them. So our task force charge is clear. We add our work. We're moving forward, and we're prepared to update you today on that work.
Good morning, everyone. I'll do my best to follow Dr. Smiley. So obviously, he mentioned the data piece, and part of the charge for this group was to look at the data. And as you can see, these students are economically disadvantaged. You can see that a majority of them are over the age of 26 and most attended part-time. You will also note that the students in the associate degree programs struggle the most, these African-American males. But in one little glimmer of hope for us while we were digging in the data, we found that our African-American males actually performed at their best in eight-week course formats. But you can see the success rates over the last couple of years have been in decline. And then you can see that as we compare our African-American males with our Hispanic males and our white males, there is a certain gap there as well. And so we knew we had work to do, and so we wanted to be as transparent as possible with our board, so you could see the decline in student success for African-American males.
Madam Chair and Board Members, Madam President, we want to make it very, very clear that we did not wait for a report in order to move forward with our work. And so then I'd briefly share with you then, in spring and summer, we started our work diligently in this case. We then identified for summer all African-American males at this college, every one of them. And so in identifying those individuals, then, we were able to engage in two efforts. One effort was the Case of a Learning Resource Outreach Initiative. We're very proud of our Learning Resource Center here at the college, where you have learning resources, you also have a Learning Support Center, and you also have tutoring housed there. And so then that particular department has done an outstanding job in putting together an outreach initiative faculty, creating an atmosphere where faculty members then will know the students who are in their classes that are in this category. We then were able then to pull together every African-American male student this summer with a GPA of 2.4 or less, and we were able then to speak specifically, to work specifically with those students. The Learning Resource Center then made a special effort to reach out directly to every faculty member at this college who had those students in their classes. And then to engage in the process of providing them the information they needed, they could share with those students about the resources that are available, and as faculty members to encourage those students to take advantage of those resources. And faculty was indeed doing that, and we're very proud of the faculty and their work with regard to that. So Learning Resource Center this summer did an outstanding work in working to impact our students. In addition to that, this summer, we had staff at SPC, 15 of them, who then reached out and made an effort to reach out to every African-American male student at this college, reaching out to them, engaging discussion with them, getting information from them about things that were creating an issue for them, difficulties that they may have been having, how we may be able to support them, and serving as a mentor of sort, if you will, throughout the summer in their work. In addition to that, in this particular case, we're very proud to say then that the whole notion of the use of my courses, faculty members will be in a position where they can, in fact, look at my courses and be able to identify students in their classes, or in fact, in this cohort of African-American males. So then they can zero in on providing support that those students may need. And then, of course, secondly, I would just simply say to you, the task force itself is at work. We've met four times, we'll be meeting three more times. We will come before you in November with a full-blown report. That report will give you the powerful report we believe will make a difference, will start to achieve results, will start to get an impact on African-American males. But I want you to know that work has already started, and we believe will have a powerful impact on the success of our students here at the college. I am convinced that it will happen.
Before we move on to the next slide, it's important to piggyback off what Dr. Smiley just said, because you can see the success rates actually increased or went up from spring to summer, and we believe that there's a direct correlation with that. So back in 1999, there was a Brother to Brother program. I think Mr. Gibbons is probably the only one, and Dr. Williams is probably the only two, that knew of this program back in the day. This program was powerful in the sense that it welcomed our African-American males into their hearts, and we gave them love and support and mentorship. Now, Dr. Smiley and I could stand up here and tell you all about this program from our perspective, but we felt it would be better if we had an alumni of SPC and of the Brother to Brother program come and address the board this morning. And so with that, I'd like to offer up the microphone to Dr. Ernest McDonald.
Good morning.
A little nervous here. I'd like to thank the board for definitely recognizing this problem, and from what I've heard from these guys and Dr. Williams, you know, your guys' aggressiveness in terms of trying to solve the solution or bring a solution to this problem. I'd like to thank Dr. Strickland, Dr. Williams, and Dr. Smiley for giving me the opportunity to tell, give you guys my experience, to kind of give you a summary of how I got to where I am and what the Brother to Brother program is about. I think this is the very first time that any of you guys, and most of the people in this room, will hear from a postgraduate of this program at such a late stage, you guys have no idea what you had at all. I really can't stress enough the specialty of this program. Like they said, my name is Dr. Ernest McDonald. I'm an eighth-grade dropout, right? Raised by a single mom, SPC Brother to Brother graduate, bachelor's degree in accounting, doctorate degree in pharmacology, and a clinical pharmacist now at Largo Medical Center. Most of you guys may think, oh, great, you know, one anomaly. He made it out. He did something special, right? No. Mike Williams. Raised by a single mom.
You can't see him.
Raised in the streets. Raised in the streets of South St. Pete. Bachelor's degree from St. Petersburg College in interdisciplinary studies. Adult ed instructor at Clearwater Adult Ed GD Program and SPC GD Program. Calvin Brown, convicted of a felony, child at 16. Bachelor's degree in international business, master's degree, from St. Pete College, by the way, master's degree in clinical mental health counseling from Webster University. Works as a development specialist with Pinellas County Urban League, also Director of Community Outreach for the Will, and is the St. Petersburg Coordinator for Crime Survivors for Safety and Justice. Derek Moody. Raised by a single mom, multiple previous arrests, dropped out of SPC first time around. SPC Brother to Brother graduate, bachelor's degree in business economics from University of South Florida, corporate tax specialist with Price Waterhouse Coopers. Thank you, guys. I just want you guys to know that that's just the guys that were able to make it here. You guys had a program that developed scientists, myself, Jeremy Johnson, clinical pharmacist, Colin Se, Linford Davis, engineers. You guys developed, you guys put out educators, community leaders, corporate tax accountants. I'm an eighth-grade dropout, the six-figure salary. You guys did that, right? The summary that I'm about to give you guys of my path here embodies the challenges and experiences of all the guys here and the guys that you guys don't see, all right? Like I told you, eighth-grade dropout. After I dropped out of eighth grade, spent most of the time hanging around Jordan Park. It's where I grew up, where most of my homeboys are at. I spent a lot of time with a guy named Mucho. Mucho was a little older than me and was one of the guys that said, listen, listen, Shaw, you don't want to, this street life ain't for you. My mom thought he was bad, and he was, "Street life wasn't for you." My brother, convicted of selling drugs, $2,000 worth of drugs, five years in prison. They told me, listen, don't go down this path, and I took that to heart. Mucho was killed by St. Petersburg Police in 2012, involved in an armed robbery. And, but I'm thankful to say that my brother has started his own AC company and is doing great. I want to say that my first job out of school was at Office Depot. I was working at Office Depot as a lead stalker, went into my boss's office for a review one day. My boss told me, hey, Ernest, you know, A-15 is the most we can give you. And I went, what the hell? Like, what do you mean? He's like, listen, with this, with this level of education and where you're at, this is all you can get. I'm uneducated, so I go and get a GD degree, and the very first thing I hear from family members and people around the community is, oh, my goodness, you can go get a city job now. And that was the highest level of aspirations that they saw in me, and it did something to me. Talked to the aunt, and she used to one that told me, yeah, you can go to St. Pete College. You know, you can, you got your degree now, or you got your GD, you can go to St. Pete College. Well, first time I went to St. Pete College, I went to the registrar's office and tried to sign up. I was 19 years old. The registrar's office told me, I was living by myself, paying my own bills, my own rent, said, you don't have any kids, and you're not 23. You can't get financial aid. You need your mother's information. You need to, either you need to have a child, or you need to go find a police officer or somebody in order to get financial aid. Needless to say, I didn't go to school. I left, came back two years later, I had a baby. Went in with my daughter's birth certificate. They gave me financial aid and let me into college, all right? I want to say that, to tell you guys about this program, I got to campus on the first day. I've been shot at. I've been, you know, chased by the police. I've been threatened, had my life threatened by very credible individuals. My first day on campus at SPC was the scariest thing I've ever experienced in my life. I had a panic attack. And the second day, first week, I was thinking about dropping out. Second day, I met a guy named Jeremy Johnson that said, hey, listen, you need to go see Ms. Crumley, and she has a program, she can help you out. I go and see Ms. Crumley. I go into Ms. Crumley's office, and Ms. Crumley sits down, immediately stands up, says, you need to go see David Gill and get into the Brother to Brother program. You guys, it changed my life. It changed all of our lives, all right? This program was geared towards African-American males to succeed in college, but it was much more than that. It was a program that gave us a safe place. It was the very first time we could walk into a college, where we were able to walk into a college campus and allowed to be vulnerable, allowed to look at each other and go, I got, I don't know, I'm scared. It was a program that gave us expectations, that had expectations for us and held us accountable to succeed in the past classes, expectations to conduct ourselves in a certain way, and expectations to dream. But here's the most important part. When those expectations weren't met or they fell short, we weren't looked at, scolded. We were given support, given resources. We didn't pass classes. They gave, we had tutors, some of the best patient tutors you've ever seen in your life. They had a laptop lending program for us that couldn't stay at school all day or didn't have computers at home. The book lending program, he will tell you. Oh, my God. So for us that didn't meet the expectations, expectations conduct-wise, we had impromptu conduct meetings, where David Gill would pull us in, get a group of the guys in and say, listen, this is the situation, this is what happened in the class, this is what happened on campus. What are you thinking? What the heck is going on? We would sit down as brothers and encourage each other and work through problems. Conduct and relationships. Dr. Williams, I didn't know her, Dr. Williams, she was Dr. Williams, but Mrs. Williams would come in and talk to us about male-female relationships. That girl I had that baby from at 18, I married her. We've been together 20 years because of Dr. Williams. She taught us that love wasn't easy, that love was something real. We'd get in, we'd close the door, and she'd really have a heart-to-heart conversation with us. We get in, we close the door, and she'd really have a heart-to-heart conversation with us. Then lastly, when we fell short with, to the expectations to dream, guys, they brought in guest speakers, took us on college trips. Guest speakers that took, taught us to think outside of a box, outside of the box. I bought my very first house at SPC because a guest speaker came in and told us, listen, you'll never in your life be able to loan or get money loaned to you at an interest rate of three point, or 3%. If you don't buy Nikes with this, guys, you can actually do something with this money. College trips that taught us, that took us to places, to colleges all over the state. It was there that I realized that an individual told me, you can own a hospital and not have to be a doctor. It was those types of dreams that kept us going. And, you know, finally, the people. Ms. Crumley was like a mother to all of us. Mother strong. Davy Gill that taught us, you know, that was there as a brother, we could go in and talk to him about anything, and God knows, we talked to him about anything. Neil Keith that taught us that you could be a compassionate, strong man. Dr. Williams, we didn't even know what she did. She wasn't even there at campus. But every time something happened, she was there. She, we had private meetings to come in and say, hey, listen, guys, there's a problem going on, there's a situation. She was like that aunt that would pull you in that room and go, what the, what were you thinking? She would look at us and go, that was stupid. And many others, Sheramondorf, the tutors, like I said, that were there, but more importantly, my brothers. Those guys, I'm sorry, I know, I know I'm short on time.
Take your time.
Those guys, those guys told me it was okay to be flawed. Told me that, you know, challenged me to push myself to be better. I'm standing here as a doctor of pharmacy, as a clinical pharmacist, because they pushed me, alright? I'm a better, I'm a better father, I'm a better provider, and I'm a better man, better man because of this program and because of these guys. Lastly, I'd like to say, I know we're in a time where we like to codify everything, we like to get the latest algorithms and look at, and crunch the data, latest data analytics. I just ask you guys to look at the real results right here in front of you, right here in this room, produced and developed by St. Pete College and a program that you guys started, This was a solid, it's a solid foundation. We're all here to help. Thank you, and if you have any questions, I know I ran over time, but if you have any questions, we will stick around if you want to ask us anything, and we're here to help this program in any way that we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As we come before you in November, the Brother to Brother program will in fact be a key component of the report that will be brought forth to you, so please be mindful of that. We'll only say just one thing, and that would be this, as we come before you, please note then that our work will bring forward a comprehensive and systemic plan. Anything less than that does not work, and we all know that. And so we're not going to come with a bandage, we're going to come with a comprehensive systemic plan. Our learning resources department here is outstanding, they're in strong support, they will be doing their work. Our provosts here are extraordinarily supportive in facilities and providing the support that we need, we're counting on their work, we believe we'll get that. CEDO, our Center for Excellence in Teaching and Learning here is on board with us in making this happen, we're proud of them and their work. Our deans are committed to making this happen, no ifs, no ands, and no buts in working with the students. And so then we say that the programs will be systemic, comprehensive, and we're looking forward to having a positive impact on the work of our faculty and working with our students and causing success rates to increase, no question about it. Convinced it's going to happen.
Alright, so you've heard this morning, obviously, what we're doing now, and we're going to continue to do this work. Obviously, come November, we'll have a full report for you that will likely, in all likelihood, rather, will include a request for money, let's just be real, to bring back this program. It's going to cost us money, and we are going to look for your support as a board. And then come January 2020, we'll begin to roll this plan out. Even if there are financial considerations to be had for the new fiscal year, we'll still look for space to revitalize the Brother to Brother program. And so with that, Dr. Smiley and I will entertain questions.
Thank you both so much, and thank you especially to Dr. McDonald and Mr. Williams and Mr. Brown and Mr. Moody for not only sharing your experience, but for being here this morning, because that in of itself speaks volumes to what this program mean to you and what we can reestablish here at the college, so thank you. Mr. Gibbons?
Madam Chair, let me just say, that's only four or whatever, five of them that showed up? Four, that whole group graduated from St. Pete College, and all of them went on to get degrees and do a lot of different things. I saw Scott Turner up there, who also is a, working with young people and exfelons to try to push them through the system to do some of the same things, and there were so many others up there. I don't have my glasses, so I couldn't see all the pictures. Scott had on a red shirt, so I was able to see him. But let me just say, this is proof in the pudding, that when you put your resources in the right places, that things can happen. Many of you, even the folks that teach here, will know who Dr. Benjamin E. Mays was. He's one of the most prolific and greatest educators in the African-American community. He was president of Morehouse College, he brought them out of the doldrums and back to prominence. And I'm the only man in my family that didn't go to Morehouse College, but I was surely taught who Benjamin E. Mays was around the dinner table all the time. And Dr. Mays had a couple quotes that I live by, and I want, want you to hear them, and you will see that they're embodied in these men that are here today and these two men that are working on this. The tragedy of life is, the tragedy of life doesn't lie, doesn't lie in not reaching your goal. The tragedy lies in not having a goal to reach. It isn't the calamity to die with dreams unfulfilled, but it is a calamity not in, not to dream. It is not a disgrace to not reach your, reach the stars, but is, but the disgrace is that you have no stars to reach for. Not failure, but low aim is a sin. And the second one, I think, really speaks to what these young men were talking about. It is not your environment, it is you. The quality of your mind, the integrity of your soul, and the determination of your will that will decide your future and shape your life. There are so many more stories like Dr. McDonald. I knew Mucho, I knew all those guys, and JP, just he's talking about in Jordan Park, as Dr. Williams does probably well too. But it's not where you start, it's where you finish. And there's a lot of stories like that, and we can have a lot more. So when you guys come forward for this, I don't know what the rest of the board is going to do for the funding that you need, I will surely be in support of that. Thank you, and a great job to Dr. Smiley and to Provost Strickland. 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 I was trying to make sure he knew he was smart too, because he actually said smart about that. But Provost Strickland, thank you guys for working on this, and to all that are on your committee as well. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
I'll make this quick. I want to thank both of you for your work in seeing this through, digging through the data, and hopefully taking us to the next level here. I have a comment and a question, though. The comment is, Dr. Williams, you and I have been talking about this for the last two years. I think one of the missing links at some of these board meetings is a connection with our students, past and present, and potentially future as well. So obviously, we can't do this all the time, but this is extremely beneficial, I think, for the board and for others in the room to make that connection, to talk to the students and to get them in here every once in a while. So thank you all for coming, and thank you for your hard work. My question is, and I'm sorry both of you sat down, from the summer work that's been done and the extra effort that's already been put in, as you both said, we're not waiting for a plan, we're starting to implement some things. What was the feedback from the students you were working with over the summer, once it was all said and done?
That feedback was compelling. It's amazing that in many instances, students were shocked that they received phone calls, quite frankly, and calling them because they were called directly by the people that were working with them, engaging in discussion with them. They were somewhat shocked by the phone call, but they were encouraged by it. And I believe that it had a positive impact on the thinking, and I know it had a positive impact on the ability to move forward in some, I believe to move forward in the fall. So we went through many of them, and I read through many of the comments that were made by the students. They were positive, they were encouraging, they were very, very pleased that the college was reaching out to them, provide support for them, and concerned about the success in college.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Kidwell?
I would just like to say, I was excited to join this board, but that was inspirational. Very proud to, of those guys and to, you know, hear those stories. I mean, that was powerful, and I would love to support going forward.
Excellent. Just, you can sit down. I just had one comment. One of the things that I think we don't say enough to the administration and the staff is that we might ask for a plan very specific to African-American males, but I, I don't want to lose sight of the fact that, you know, in December, we heard about the wonderful changes to my courses and what the Faculty Senate had adopted and how they were implementing new curriculum and working one-on-one with students and how implementing those changes were going to tip that scale a little bit. And then part of our strategic plan dealt with pushing people in, as we heard earlier, with the Quality Enhancement Plan and developing that plan and making sure that we were getting the right people into this program. And so I feel like sometimes we get somewhat focused on a very specific deliverable, and we don't acknowledge that our collective plan that you all have so hard, been, been working so hard on for the past two years, each one of those pieces is what's contributing to the success, because without the QEP and without the Faculty Senate's support of the My Courses implementation and those transitions, and without some of these other things that have been going on, it may have been premature or much more expensive and much more difficult to come back with a plan specific to address this issue, which we so need to address. So thank you to each of you for, for that continued work.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
It took me a minute because I had to compose myself. You were making me cry this morning, and that was not what I was expecting from our trustee meeting at all. But I have to echo what you said. I mean, I've been on this board for quite some time, and that is the first time that I have, that we've gotten that connection, that, I mean, we believe that's what we're doing by serving on this board, but more stories like that, please, because that's very motivating, I guess is a good word to use. But I'm going to go back to something I've said for about six years now, that's our story. That's the story that needs to be told. Those are the, those are the people we should be highlighting in our marketing and efforts to recruit to the college, because he just told the story of it can be done.
Exactly. I totally agree, and I want to thank each of the board members for their kind comments. And I tell you, this team is really working very diligently to help all students succeed. And we've done a lot to create a collective impact as a, as a family to make it happen. And with that, we still have those students who are just underprepared or underserved, and we just can't miss them. And I think the work under Dr. Smiley and, I don't know if you guys know now, Dr. Strickland, we know that with that committee, it is, it is coming back. These guys are near and dear to me. By the way, I was the director of special programs, that was my job.
This is your program?
And the Brother to Brother program fell under that. But, but it was something that Ernest came to me, I would say maybe four years ago, and with a couple of the guys, to say, Dr. Williams, this is still needed. And so when the team was talking about strategy, I thought it would be good, sometimes you have to go backwards to go forwards. And we dropped a program that was very important in changing lives, a lot of lives. At one point, we had almost 40 to 50 guys in this program, and they weren't all young. Some of them were in their 30s and 40s and just kind of finding their legs to move around. So I'm very proud of the work that's done, and thank you for your kind comments, and so hopefully you'll be just as kind when they come back with a plan. But I don't think everything is going to mean we need money. Sometimes it's also some restructuring and some moving the deck chairs and some other ideas, and so we'll be working on that. But we do need something like this to help these guys find their barber shops on campus to sit down and talk things through and work through stuff. So very good work, and I want to thank the faculty and those in the learning support centers. These are our tutors, and they've reached out to these guys personally to make sure that they were prepared and reminded them of what's available to them. So that was a big, a big push as well, and for the faculty for their interest in, in learning how to serve those students. And we talked about equity and, and making sure that we're providing each student what they need, so I'm very proud of the work they've done.
Trustee Gibbons?
Madam Chair, just because the trustee's not here any longer doesn't mean they shouldn't get credit, and I think Dr. Williams will tell you that the person that really pushed these programs was Ken Burke, and I'd like for us to send the final report over to him so he can see the progress we've made. He would literally count every African-American that walked across the stage and tell me every, every graduation, there were not enough graduating. So I'd really like for us to send him over that report when it's done in November so that he can see the things that he pushed, we're still trying to work on.
Thank you.
Hard act to follow, Ms. Hunt, but are you ready to give us some budget numbers?
Just trying to figure out who put the budget report after that. Good morning, Madam Chair, board members, and Dr. Williams. This morning, I have a very brief report. It's the first two months of the new fiscal year, and we'll first focus on our revenue. So first, looking at our student tuition and fees, the budget for this fiscal year is about $61.6 million. We have brought in $25.8 million, which is a little, about 42% of the fiscal year. Here is a graph that you see every month that projects where we will end the tuition revenue at the end of the fiscal year. The red line is the budgeted amount, and the blue line is the projected actual amount. And we'll go into detail on the next slide. The next line item is our state funding at a budget of $72.6 million. We have brought in $10.4 million. You see, there's more this fiscal year because we did have a significant move from our Florida College System Program revenue to our lottery fund, from our lottery to the Florida College System Program. Next are other revenues. This includes some of our interest dividends, used facilities revenue, that came in at The next two line items, our fund transfers in, which comes in from our auxiliary and our reserves, which we typically record at the end of the fiscal year. Next, to break down the tuition revenue, we first have our credit tuition, post-secondary adult vocation, and our non-credit. On our credit tuition, we are trending a little bit above our projected budget amount. Also, keep in mind, we have two more terms, opportunity for enrollment, we have our second eight-week term, which starts October 14th, and then we also have our winter term that we started last fiscal year. For our PSAV, we are trending on track with the budgeted amount. And then for our non-credit, you see here that we are trending a little bit below, but I did speak with Andrew Henning yesterday, and there is some revenue that we are about to recognize and receive that will lower that margin and be more the projected budget The last slide is our expenses. We have here for our personnel and benefits, we came in at $17.3 million. Our current expense at about $5.5 million. Capital so far, we've spent about $132,000 for a total operating of under $23 million. We're at 16% expended in the budget this year. Right now, with two months of the fiscal year, that's approximately 16.7%, so you see we are under that amount. If we look at our revenue minus expenditure, we're at $13.7 million right now, and keep in mind that that will continue to lower as we get through the fiscal year. in mind that that will continue to lower as we get through the fiscal year. Any questions on the budget?
Questions? All right. Thank you, Ms. Hunt. We do have some administrative matters in your package was the Personnel Report. Are there any questions related to the Personnel Report? And if none, can I, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Consent agenda, old business, includes the Footprint Review and District Office Migration Plan, and so, Mr. Miles, I have exactly consent.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam President, members of the Board. My name is Brian Miles, and this morning, I'll be continuing with you our discussion on our Footprint Review and what I hope is our Migration Plan from the District Office property. Before we get into the specifics of today's discussion, I wanted to revisit briefly the purpose and process of our Footprint Review. It became acutely aware to us about three years ago that the college and higher ed in general was experiencing some different financial pressures. We had a decrease in enrollment that had been going on for a few years. We were receiving less state funding specifically in operations, but also in capital funding. And we were noticing that our enrollment was going more toward online. And all of that led us to the conclusion that we needed to review our real estate assets, determine what our space utilization was, and leverage any opportunities that might exist for the college. Now, I told you last time, and I've mentioned it before, that as a college, we have tremendous opportunity in our real estate assets. We have 12 campuses, centers, or sites, depending on how you count them, and we have about 2.6 million square feet of space. So, relative to other institutions, we have a lot of property and a lot of opportunity to leverage those assets. Switching to process, well, let me back up. We took on the Footprint Review in connection with our three-year financial plan. You notice, we went through a budget reduction process, and we realigned some resources to different areas of the college to meet our financial needs. The process that we have used for the Footprint Review has been to commission various studies on different parts of the college, on different sites that we've had, and we've started taking those studies on three years ago. We have toured most of you around to some of the sites where we have opportunities, and we have started to bring forward recommendations on how to leverage our assets. And we went through some of that discussion last time. Today, I want to, I want to talk about what the process would be if you approve what I hope you will approve today. If we achieve the votes that I hope we achieve today, the process would be that we would confirm the vote to declare DO as unnecessary for ancillary or educational purposes. That would be number one. We would then send our spot survey to the state. Hopefully, the state would approve that. In connection with that vote, today at the end, I will also ask you to consider taking a vote to allow us to list the district office property for sale, with the caveat that the state approves the spot survey, amending that property off of our inventory, and with the caveat that we bring back to you the highest or best offer for that property after we go through a competitive bidding process. And then, finally, the last vote I'll ask you to take today is one to approve the spot survey to renovate the four sites that would absorb the personnel and functions from the district office property. Okay? And then, I'll get further into the process as we go through this presentation, but I kind of wanted to map that out for you as we go through this. In just a minute, I'm going to show you the fiscal year 1920 capital budget to remind you of some of the amounts that have been approved and earmarked, and then we'll get into a brief overview of the renovation projects, which you've already seen, but I just wanted to call it to your attention again, and then I will ask you to consider taking the votes that I just mentioned at the very end. Now, most of you were with us in May and June. Trustee Kidwell was not, but I have since met with Kidwell, or Trustee Kidwell, and advised him on what was approved for the capital budget. But I wanted to just bring this back to you to remind you what was discussed and what was approved. We approved about a $35.5 million capital budget for the fiscal year. And if you look toward the center of that slide, you see a line item for $10.5 million, college-wide infrastructure renovations. That was approved as well. And earmarked within that $10.5 million is $5 million for the renovations that we're going to be discussing today, the renovations that would be made to absorb the DO personnel and functions. Okay? So, keep that $5 million in your mind, please. Okay. Last time, we talked about four particular sites that would absorb the DO functions and personnel. One is EpiTech, this building. Another one is EpiServices, the building next door, which has no classrooms or labs. A third site is the Downtown Center, and then a fourth site, which you'll see on this next slide, is Clearwater, specifically the Business or BT, Business Technology or BT Building that is on that campus. As we look at EpiTech, we see that we have 10 classrooms available in this building. Now, we wanted to present this utilization information to you in the best, most concise summary information possible. And I'm not sure it's perfect, but it's at least a preliminary pass at it to give you an idea of how much space we have to grow into. As we look at EpiTech, we have 10 classrooms. On average, two of those classrooms are being utilized at any given time that we offer instruction, Monday through Friday. Okay? Let me say that again. At any given time, two of the 10 classrooms are being utilized Monday through Friday. Okay? So, if you look at one particular hour, we may have no utilization, and then another particular hour, we may have four classrooms utilized. This is simply an average. Our peak usage for these classrooms occurs from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at night, Monday through Thursday generally. Okay? We have 19 labs in this building. On average, seven of those are being utilized at any given time, Monday through Friday. And then, you can see the peak usage, 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and then 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at night. As we look at Downtown Center, we see we have 18 classrooms, and on average, seven of those classrooms are being utilized at any given time, Monday through Friday. We have four labs with an average of one being utilized at any given time. Peak usage for the lab occurs 2:00 to 3:00 p.m., and for the classrooms, it's 9:00 a.m. to noon. Before I switch to Clearwater, I hope you can see that there's room to grow at these sites. That's my point in showing you this information. As we look at Clearwater, we have 56 classrooms across seven buildings. Okay? And on average, 39 of those, or virtually 70%, are being utilized at any given time, Monday through Friday. Okay? 35 labs across seven buildings. On average, 22 labs are being utilized at any given time, Monday through Friday. And you can see the peak usage times for those two amenities. Okay? So, again, room to grow at that site as well. In the BT Building, we have four classrooms, not heavily utilized at this time, so when we propose renovating that building, we certainly have some opportunity to continue growing in classroom and lab space, even with the renovations that we're talking about to that building. Okay? Okay. Let's jump into revisiting the Migration Plan from DO to the other four sites that I mentioned. As we talk about the personnel or functions that would go from DO to Downtown, we see that the President's Office, Administration, Finance, Budgeting and Compliance, Data Management, Foundation, and the General Counsel and her staff would relocate into the Downtown space. We would seek to renovate the third and fourth floor, or potentially the fifth floor. We could play with that a little bit to see what the best combination is, but right now, the third and fourth floor seem to make the most sense. Even with renovations to these spaces, we still have sufficient classroom and lab space to use, and we also have sufficient room to consider proposals from our partners to expand their space if you as a board, you as a president, decide you want to go in that direction. Okay? I think we have about 23,000 square feet of completely under, unutilized space down there. We would consume about 12,000 of that, and about 11,000 could be available for partner use if we chose to move in that direction. The renovations would consist of building out vacant shelled space for offices, conference rooms, and collaborative workspace. Okay? As we look at the DO move to Clearwater, the BT Building, the team or functions that would go into this space and occupy the entire building would be our information technology team. Okay? And because of this building's age, we would need to renovate the entire building. Our renovations would consist of a new roof, new air conditioning, improvements to our data center down there for backup power and fire suppression. We would update all the bathrooms for ADA compliance, and we would replace flooring and freshen up the spaces by painting. Okay? Of our renovations' costs, the number of which I provided to you last time, that was an estimate, this would cost the most because it involves an entire building that's being renovated and involves some pretty sophisticated technology to move IT in there. Okay? As we look at the functions and teams that would go into EpiServices, we would move marketing, part of HR, the remaining portions of HR are already there. Business and Financial Services, same thing, part of, part of that team is already there. So, we would co-locate those teams. Events planning, and also admissions and records. These renovations would primarily consist of space configuration and wall and door additions or removals. Not that significant, but meaningful nevertheless. And these renovations, due to the cost, the estimated cost, could be completed by SPC's in-house construction team, which would provide a cost savings to the college. DO to EpiTech, we would propose to move academic effectiveness, online learning, institutional research, and financial aid. And when I say DO to EpiTech, some of these teams are at EpiServices, so they would move to EpiTech instead of staying at EpiServices. Renovations would be the same as those to EpiServices. This would impact the second floor of this building only. And again, these renovations, due to the price point, could be completed by our in-house construction team. Here is a possible relocation timeline, if everything goes as I hope it will go today. Hopefully, we will confirm the vote to declare DO property unnecessary. Hopefully, you'll approve us listing the DO property for sale with the caveats that I mentioned earlier. And hopefully, you'll approve the spot survey for the renovations that I just discussed. Going into October through January, assuming you approve those measures, we will complete 100% construction drawings with an architect for the spaces that we mentioned, and then we'll finalize the move sequence. February to April of 2020, we would renovate Epi using the in-house construction crew, and that's EpiServices and EpiTech. February through May 2020, that's when we would do our competitive advertising to select a contractor to renovate the Downtown and Clearwater projects. And that could be one contractor, depending on the size and capabilities of that company. It could be more than one contractor to renovate those spaces. And then, June 2020 to September 2020, we would hope that all the construction would be coming toward completion at that time. We would make all of our final moves into those renovated spaces. We would relocate the items that are stored at the District Office Warehouse to another location, most likely the Tarpon Warehouse where we have a lot of space. And then, once and for all, we would vacate District Office and hopefully have it under contract at that time, if you feel that's the right measure, and then closing in on a sale date for that property. With that in mind, these are the votes that I would suggest you consider today. The first one would be to confirm declaring District Office property as unnecessary for educational and ancillary purposes. And I would ask that you confirm this vote because if you remember, last time, we had some conditions attached to this vote. And one of those conditions was getting a response from the state on whether or not we could use the $1.5 million in PICO funds. And I want to pause here because I want to tell you that since the last board meeting, Dr. Williams has been busy talking to the state about whether or not we can use those funds, and she has secured an answer from the state, and the state has indicated that we can use those funds as long as we use them for capital outlay projects. So, the state is very comfortable with us using them, using those funds for these renovation projects or other capital outlay projects in the future.
Yes.
So, our plan overall is to use the $5 million that's already earmarked in the budget to make these renovations. If the costs exceed $5 million, we would take some of the sale proceeds from the sale of District Office and offset those additional costs. Okay? So, again, going back to this, I would ask that you confirm the vote without the conditions that we had last time. The second vote I would ask you to consider is to vote, to list DO for sale. Again, we would use a competitive process, and listing for sale assumes that the state approves the spot survey, and it comes with a caveat that we would bring back to you the best offer for this property that you could then consider and approve if you see fit. And then, the third vote would be to approve the spot survey for the renovations of the four sites that I just mentioned. That concludes my presentation. What are your questions?
Thank you, Mr. Miles.
Yes, ma'am.
So, just to recap what we did last month, if you didn't look back on the minutes carefully, I just wanted to refresh your recollection that last month, we voted to declare the District Office property surplus, and we also moved to approve the Spot Survey Number Two, Version Seven, for the disposal of the real property, but that did not include the approval of the Spot Survey for the renovations. Both of those motions were contingent upon an answer from the state as to the $1.5 million and the estimated budgets for the renovations, which is why Mr. Miles came back today to have us reconsider. Reauthorize those actions with the requested information. So, did Ms. Gardner and I recap that correctly? Okay.
So, you got the letter from the state?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Mr. Miles, I want to make sure we got it.
We got it in writing. I followed up to get it in writing.
No, no, I just, I want to make sure. It's something today, or now, it's something later.
That they do.
They're dealing with the state, and they came to help.
I mean, one, one thing, not to interrupt Mr. Gibbons, but I just, especially seeing the migration of the staff and administration to the campuses, Mr. Stone Cypher said this last month, but I think there's something so valuable about having those positions on the campuses and having that interaction and having the President's Office in Downtown accessible to many business leaders and others who are right there. I just, I think it's a really positive move, and thank you for the information about the room to grow because that's certainly a concern, so.
That brings me to my next question. I want to be clear about the room to grow. Mr. Miles talks about online growing, but in recent months, you know, we've been talking about online a lot, and it's because a lot of people don't have the option of taking any other course. So, have we made sure that we look that if we change our model in terms of offering those courses and classrooms, that we still have the same amount of space to grow?
Yes, yes. Thank you so much, Trustee Gibbons. That is exactly what we're looking at, to ensure that we utilize the space effectively. And in my President's Report, I'll be sharing with you guys, and I think only Trustee Gibbons knows, but a new review that we're going to have by OPAGA. They're coming to look at our space utilization. So, we've been digging deeply into space utilization. And, you know, yesterday at our Cabinet Meeting, I did talk about the need for us to really look at online and the look at online and the success rates, but also the ability to reach our students who want to come on campus. We have the space, we have the opportunities, we have beautiful facilities, and our students seem to succeed at a higher rate
Well, I saw this myself.
In the face-to-face and blended classes. And so we need to take a look at that. But that is something on my list.
That's why I asked that question. I mean, I know that we proud to be a big online school, but at the same time, the rates of passage rates are not that great. And it seems like we would get back to some of the core basics of putting people in classrooms. I don't know what that looks like in terms of space utilization, but I know it will require more space. I just don't know, you know? And it's not to impede this process along.
Right.
I would like to see, I just don't think, to be honest with you, I just don't think colleges do a good job of real estate deals. I'm just being honest with you. I don't think any college or state does a good job of doing real estate deals. And, you know, it's unfortunate that we built this building and then we don't need it so soon. So, but I just
Well, before we make any decision on the sale, it comes back here, so we'll be bringing that forward.
There's some things you can't control nor does board. You just got to accept what's out there.
Right, right. Agreed.
Are there any other comments, questions, motions?
I move to confirm the vote declaring DO property is unnecessary for educational or ancillary purposes. I'd also move to vote to list the DO property for sale, provided state approves said spot survey number two, version seven, with the caveat that the best offer must be approved by this board, Board of Trustees of St. Petersburg College. And finally, I would move to approve spot survey number two, version eight, for renovation purposes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving forward, we look forward to seeing it listed and receiving some offers.
Thank you for your help.
New business, we have a number of reports for the Workforce Institute, credit curriculum changes. And if you all don't mind, we'll look at these collectively unless you have a comment. And then the changes to curriculum for spring 2020 with modified and deleted programs. Do you all have any questions, grants, restricted fund contracts? And then, we've already approved the spot survey that's on the agenda.
Chair.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the entire consent agenda.
Second.
Any conversation, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. There are no specific informational reports in our packet. There are no proposed changes to the Board of Trustees' Rules Manual. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Williams for the president's report.
Thank you, appreciate that. Thank you so much. We have had a very good month of a lot of learning in reference to the state. And I just want to bring you guys up to speed on what's happening regarding funding from the legislature. You know, Commissioner Corcoran has been working very diligently with the Council of Presidents to make sure that, one, he supports us in moving forward and building a strong strategy for how the college systems, the college system will be supported going forward, and came up with a funding model that included the president's feedback and others as well, that will be a tiered funding model that will be based on growth. So that means growth of our programs, growth of student enrollment, et cetera. That's one component. The second component will be performance-based still, that will be heavily on student success and student completion. And so you will see us working more diligently, looking at our numbers, I have where we rank right now and what areas we need to specifically focus on. This has not been approved yet, but it has gone through two levels and so far has not really been changed. And so we'll see where we land. But if the funding from the state is going to be heavily based on growth and completion, we are going to have to do exactly what we planned in our strategic plan in improving student success and retention and moving people forward, being very creative in how we offer our programs, and being very creative in program options and choices. It's time for us to bring on those new programs. And so I wanted to say this to the board, as well as to our colleagues in the audience, that this train is moving. And so we're going to need to continue to do what we're doing to get on it. The second is that we are going to be audited by OPAGA. They have hired a third-party organization that will come in and look at our space utilization. And I believe they're going to look at the decisions and methodology that we chose regarding the space that we've acquired over the last couple of years. And so I'm proud that we're already looking at this and realizing that we have more space possibly than what we need. So as Mr. Miles and others come around looking at space, don't get the heebie-jeebies. It is just that we're preparing for the OPAGA review. Every college and university is going through this same study. The university's report will be shared in December. The Florida College System Report, I believe, will be shared in May. But they're visiting us now. And so I think we're the first one that they're visiting. And so you'll see us looking more into that information and asking more questions of the deans regarding programs, where they're located, how they're offered, and the provosts regarding space and what's actually being utilized and what's not being utilized. And so we'll need to take a strong look at that. And I wanted to make sure that you knew about the OPAGA report. And then finally, when it comes to PICO funds, the commissioner and others have been working on a strategy to look at PICO in new buildings. And so they have several categories that will be used for PICO in new buildings. For new buildings, they're looking for the colleges to come up with a certain percentage of the funds for the building. And so we are moving forward with the P3 notion for the Health Education Center. And there's two buildings that are on my radar, two sites. One is HEC, and the second would be the Tarpon Springs Campus. They have been on the list for a while, and we need to get them back on the list for some strong renovation and to make that campus more collegiate and to provide the shared learning spaces that we need. So those are the two facilities. We'll be bringing back details as to what we can and need to do as an institution, moving forward on those buildings and how they're looking at PICO funds going forward. So it's going to be a lot different than what it has been in the past. And I think it was trustee Gibbons, when I first started, who said under the new administration, there's going to be a lot of changes. And he is right on the money. And the good news is, we're right there with it. And so we're moving forward. So I just wanted to give you some history on why you're going to see some of the questions coming forward and some of the changes when it comes to facilities, programs, and modalities of offering. So I think that would be my report before we open for the Collegiate High School.
Great, thank you. Before we adjourn as the Board of Trustees of the college and re-adjourn as the board for the high school, are there any other comments from the board? Very good. With that, we'll adjourn. And we will re-adjourn as the governing board of the St. Petersburg Collegiate High Schools. So Ms. Mc.
Good morning, Chair Cole, members of the board, and Dr. Williams. I'm Sterling Metz, the Associate Vice President of Collegiate High Schools. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity this morning to bring forth a proposed amended budget for St. Petersburg Collegiate High School, North Pinellas, at Tarpon Springs, the St. Petersburg Collegiate High School's Policies and Procedures Manual, and the St. Petersburg Collegiate High School's School Emergency Plans. First, we'll take a look at the proposed amended budget. The chart in blue is the current approved budget, which you approved in June, and the gold chart is the proposed amended budget. We're bringing forth an amended budget because it reflects the increase in student enrollment of 10 students, which is approximately $58,000. It also reflects the fact that the Title II Professional Development Dollars, we are not eligible for this year. We will have those next year. So the total funding sources would be $1,098,568. Next, we'll take a look at operating expenses. The only change here is a reduction in personnel cost of $15,000. That's because these are actual personnel costs versus estimated. If you recall, not everyone was hired when we approved this budget, and therefore, this is the actual personnel cost of $726,304. The next few slides, we'll take a look at additional operating expenses. You'll notice a reduction in workshops and travel, again, because of the loss of the Title II Professional Development Funds, as well as a reduction in personal services and fees. You'll see an increase in textbooks and instructional materials, minor equipment, major equipment, which includes some computers, and some software increases. We are hopeful that the cost of the textbooks, the computers, and part of the software costs will be reimbursed through the charter school program grant funds. And if so, that would create a nice reserve in the budget for any anticipated expenses. On the next slide, we continue with operating expenses. And here, you will notice that the food budget has been significantly increased. Currently, we are at 31% of students qualifying for free or reduced lunch at Tarpon Springs, and that's a little higher than normal. And we're very pleased with that, but we needed to increase our food budget. You'll also see an increase in instructional materials, I mean, in office supplies and printing costs. So the total current expense is $372,264. And finally, on the last slide, you will see that the total budgeted expenditures includes the additional revenue for those extra students and, of course, the expenses that go with that. So the total would be $1,098,568. Are there any questions on the proposed amended budget?
Do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve the proposed budget for St. Petersburg Collegiate High School.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have two items on the consent agenda for your review and hopefully approval. The first is a revision to the St. Petersburg Collegiate High School's enrollment and admission policy. This is required by the state for the charter school program grant funds. What it will mean is for the next recruitment cycle, for the 2020-21 school year, and perhaps, depending on the term of the grant, the 2021 recruitment cycle, that we would waive the sophomore entrance criteria. We will still hold the criteria as required by state statute for full dual enrollment at the junior level. And this would open the door to those students that are not quite at the 3.0 unwed, a little bit under that. And it is required because federal funds are tied to the charter school program grant. And then the second item is required by Pinellas County School District. This is the school emergency plans for your review and hopefully approval. Do you have any questions?
Move that we approve, many chair, the two items on the consent agenda for St. Petersburg Collegiate High School.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Is there any other business for the Collegiate High School to come before the board? With that, we will adjourn. Thank you all.